Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Room call please.
Brochus?
Here.
Reichtner?
Here.
Barnhart?
Here.
Martina?
Here.
Eisler?
Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Public comment on agenda items. Alright, uh, there is a proclamation here for Black History Month, so. Whereas the city of Summery takes pride in recognizing February two thousand twenty-three as Black History Month, a time dedicated to remembering and celebrating, uh, black culture, history, contributions, and sacrifices made to create a brighter culture for all Americans. And whereas Black History Month celebrates the achievements of African-Americans who have been instrumental in shaping the character, culture, economic life of our state and nation. And whereas Dr. Carter Woodson, founder of the Association of Study of African-American Life and History, which first won Black History Week in nineteen twenty-six, is widely regarded as a father of black history. Whereas in nineteen seventy-six, the formal expansion of Black History Month was officially recognized by the United States government. And whereas in two thousand nineteen, theme Black Migration focuses specifically on movements of people's African heritage and new destinations and social realities in the twentieth century. It does not forget millions of early Africans who have forcibly taken to the Americas. And whereas Black History Month is occasionally to rediscover the endeavors, stories of African-Americans and gifts of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on the future generations. It is also time to. Uh, excuse me, it is also time for the countless contributions of African-Americans. Many who lived through the, uh, segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination to enrich every fiber of American life. There are examples of heroism, patriotism, and enterprise that have given people of all backgrounds confidence, courage, and faith to pursue their own dreams. Whereas Black History Month is recognized and honored by many people, events, significant contributions to black and African-American our community, nation, and worldwide. So now therefore I, Josh Brochus, mayor of the city of Summery, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim February two thousand twenty-three as Black History Month. May all residents of the city of Summery join in collaborating their countless contributions to the American culture and our nation and the world. So that is for that. Alright, um, approval of the minutes and reports, uh, minutes of January ninth and twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three, fire department, police department, treasurer, co-signing, planning commission. Do I have a second?
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina? Yes. Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes. Uh, suite?
Hello, everybody. Kurt, hello, the suite committee. Um, so I just have two donations that I consider you to accept on behalf of the suite committee. One is two hundred fifty from the Goodwill's Hose Company, and then the other is a five hundred dollar donation from City Stewardship.
I'll make the motion to accept those two, the two donations from, two hundred fifty for the Goodwills and five hundred for, from the Stevens Grove Ford to go towards.
Suite committee.
Sweet committee. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Alright, and just so you are aware, this Sunday is our first, uh, for this year, suite stewardship programs, uh, that we're working with the troop. So, um, this Sunday begins once a month, that will be at the property meeting. So we'll be working with the VPW again for brush painting and everything.
Probably cool this weekend.
Yeah. We should have planned, we should have planned it for Thursday.
We already have a kind CD and, uh, many eponymous for all of these.
Alright. Alright, thanks. Thank you, Kurt. Uh, DEI update. Alright, I'm just.
Uh, last time I was up here, I talked about doing three events this year. Instead of that, we decided to do the three events in one day. But instead of having April, the Diversity Month, July, the barbecue and all that, we decided to do Diversity, Multi-Control Food Truck and Barbecue Fest. And that'll be, if approved, that's what I'm looking for tonight, to be approved by city council, uh, for August twenty-sixth.
Any, oh, I'm sorry. No, I was gonna say any questions, that's what I was gonna say. Did you have a question here?
You guys, you gonna be closing out your roads or?
No.
What's that?
Not in August.
It is.
That's the second, usually it's like a seven week group.
Yeah, so. But here. Uh, so. So. Uh, that was the twelve would be River Fest. His is two weeks later. And then.
Well, the River Festival will be the eighteenth, nineteenth.
Alright, so it'll be a week prior, I mean, River Fest will be a week prior, yours is a week after, and slay, when is the wine of River, that's, that's in September.
September, correct.
So no other events will be taking place on that weekend. So any other questions, anyone? Jim, do you still have the motion? Oh, sorry, right, give them.
Oh, this is more than a river, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Second.
Martina?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes, but I do have one more question, sorry.
Not a problem.
Uh, where are you planning on parking? You don't plan on going on the crash, or where do you plan for people to park?
Well, that we're gonna be planning everything as we go along.
You mean, but parking will be like it is for like River Fest or any other event, you know, park the street, I mean, Market Street walking in and stuff like that?
I just plan to cut along the river where they.
You mean for like the vendors and stuff like that?
No, no, for, you know, parking.
You mean to go to the event?
Yes.
I mean, probably similar to what happens for SRI, like they park on Market Street, the, uh, the lot.
The lot, Chronicles Hardware.
Yeah, that kind of stuff.
Yes.
We'll look for some volunteers to.
To, right.
Around that area.
Yeah.
I'm sure nobody parks there.
Without too much. Alright, sounds good. Anything else, Andres?
I have to for now.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, unfinished business, there is none, there is new business though, uh, the FFY twenty-two signatory. I'll just turn that over to Jamie real quick, let's explain.
Thank you. So there were several documents that were sent over from VCD that needed your signature for your twenty-two CDG contract. Those have since been signed. What we need, actually need to action on tonight, um, is in the past, Kevin, proof as your treasurer, has been the second signer on your CDG contract. This year, um, we have some new staff at CECOG, and Joe Lin was listed as the second signer for your contract. It is perfectly legal, as long as an elected official is your first signer, whoever you'd like can be your second signer. Um, I don't have any good particular reason why, it was always Kevin, it's just always been Kevin. So it's up to you whether tonight we have the option, do you want to just keep it as Kevin as it has been in the past, or would you like to have Joe Lin do it? It's really up to you.
Was anybody in objections of keeping it as Kevin as it was in the past? Alright, so do we need to make a, I think.
It's up to, I, I guess since we're doing this, we'll make a motion.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to accept the signatory as myself and Kevin to be the signatories. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus? Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes. Apologies for the confusion.
Nope, hey, that's alright. We'll take it out. Um, the workers protection form, uh, that's just an update to the policy of the home program, it's just an update. Does anybody?
Oh, that, yeah, that was part of my stuff.
Oh.
Uh, don't worry, it's just a new form we had to sign. I was like, you're completely, you just have to, it was just something that had to be signed from VCD, saying what you already do.
Okay.
I would not worry about it.
So we have a word out the home? Okay.
It all came with this twenty-two CDG program.
Alright. Uh, so, um, Penn Valley Airport twenty-two, twenty-three donations. So in the past, before those years, we've always donated to the airport there because a lot of our local businesses use that airport to come in and fly out of with their clients and things like that. The money was allocated in the budget for some reason, it never got paid in twenty-twenty-two, and it did not get paid for twenty-twenty-three when it was allocated for, which, I don't know, was a slip up in sending an invoice, whatever it was. Does anybody, I like to make the motion to pay that, it is a total of twenty-one hundred dollars per year, so it'd be a total of forty-two hundred dollars.
We don't have forty-two hundred dollars budget anymore.
We had twenty-one hundred, so we will have to make a decision on where to get the other twenty-one hundred dollars.
Since it was last year, we came back last year and paid.
That is correct, but they're asking us to because our businesses still used it. That we could say we're not going to.
Oh, yeah, I know our businesses, they can't use it if we don't give it to them twenty-two? No, we just, the point, we made the commitment, it was in the budget, there's an error in our part, I'm sending a check, did they send us the, did they ever send us the?
I, I don't know if they did or not, I, I.
That's, that's a question.
I, I couldn't, Jerome, I couldn't tell you if they did, I can't tell you if they didn't, I couldn't, I couldn't obviously say, but it was in our budget, I remember they came here and gave us the presentation, we did agree to pay it, but I don't know why it did not get paid, so.
I'm just saying, let's make a motion to pay this year's.
And then we'll find the funds.
By next year.
Correct. Alright, so I'll make the motion to pay the twenty-twenty-three invoice for the airport.
In the amount of twenty-one hundred.
In the amount of twenty-one hundred dollars, and then next meeting we can figure out for the twenty-twenty-two.
That would group one of our. That's right.
Yes.
Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes. So speaking of the airport, um, obviously it's our choice if we choose to continue to help fund that airport. Like I said, a lot of our businesses do use that, there is no set, uh, agreement right now saying we have to or we don't have to, but I didn't know if we wanted to come up with some type of, alright, we're gonna do it for the next five years and revisit it, or just do it on a yearly annual renewal. I didn't know what council wanted to decide on doing that contribution towards the airport. I didn't know if we just wanna make it an annual thing and that way.
It's been an annual for.
Yeah. Okay, so it makes, because I didn't want this, this mishap to happen again, you know, we forget to do it, we want one of those regular things that we know we need to do.
We do have, I don't know, I think they have somebody from there.
No, they asked if they wanted to come present, like, we already heard their presentation, there's nothing that has changed, it's just be the same presentation.
Attorney Cool is still not representing.
I.
How many businesses actually use it besides Wises right now?
Then, I mean, then, then I think even what, what they always done before, they had completely.
I know, buddy. There's the only business we have.
Alright, so I'll reach out and say, hey, on a yearly basis, just come and say, real quick, what you do, we're asking for funds, and we don't have that.
I know that Snyder did, and also Attorney Cool did, also went, when he was, I didn't know if he was.
Yes, alright, so I'll reach out to Truman about that, about making sure that he voices his.
Yeah, just ask him to show up and get a little bit of his feeling and.
Yes, alright, thank you. Uh, so just recently to settle on the escrow, uh, debt from the property that. Alright, okay, but from the property, so once again, when those funds are received from the city, we need to allocate them to where they need to go. I know a few months ago, I know John was at the meeting, Jerome, and so was Brad about the emergency management plan, and they're how there should be one centralized location for emergency personnel to meet. So one person suggested City Hall, but I don't know if it was you, Jerome, or someone else said that we're not, we're not really equipped for that at this time, meaning like, we need places for people to hook in for, you know, outlets and things like that.
That's, I think.
It's supposed to meet, but if there's an emergency, where, where the, uh, the central location.
Yeah, yeah, I meant like, I remember you, like, you brought it up, that's why, that's why. Yeah, no, not to be like a central location to meet if there was an emergency. And they, so it said, people suggested City Hall because it's very, I don't wanna say centralized, but centralized is very easy to get to, other than if there's obviously a flood, this would not be an ideal location, but everything else would be. So there, there was things pointed out saying how, you know, we're deficient, how we don't have this, that, the other. So I'd like to use these funds to go towards the City Hall upgrade, so we can make this location available for, if there is an emergency, that everyone can come here, everyone knows where the location is at, to use those funds to help upgrade this going to be part of that centralized location.
Command, command.
Like a command center, it's, that's however, whatever terminology you wanna use, because in the plan, like I said, there has to be, it doesn't need a location for that, and that's why to use those funds for, from that escrow account must be received.
I think the twenty-one hundred's over short.
We could do that, and then use the rest of the funds.
Question, what, isn't the nine eleven center the command center?
For the county.
Just for the county.
For the county, but once again, if you're gonna tell someone, alright, go to the nine-one-one center, how do you even describe that real quick, everyone says go to City Hall, that's the courthouse. Yeah, I mean, I just said, I think this is the perfect location, so I'd like, as Jim perfectly said, once you receive those funds, allocate twenty-one hundred dollars towards the twenty-twenty-two airport invoice, and use the remaining funds to go towards the City Hall upgrade. Do I have a second?
Second.
Martina?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
And then Councilman Eisler, I can get with you and Met Tech to try to get some type of estimated cost, so we don't, no, we gotta go out for bid and make sure we follow the legal stuff.
I think, yeah, well, when it comes back, I'm not sure what, and Brad, what equipment you, you don't feel we would need for that. Well, we've had a meeting already with the, you know, or, you know, I saw it on the occasion from our last meeting, so I'll, we'll.
I, I saw, I attended the, the fire department meeting, I think it was like now like a week ago, two weeks ago, or something like that, and Paul was getting through, getting through everything sent out, so probably getting that here shortly, but once we get a list of what we need at this location, we could try to put on to do this as we do with Met Tech and go about that, but getting the estimated cost and ask for bids and such. That work for you, Councilman Eisler?
I, I did, you know, at them, we probably need some type of, some kind of generator backup.
Up and running.
And more, more outlets and, uh, computer lines.
Yeah.
Once you come up with a whole, a plan, we're starting looking around for some grants.
Man, I might say right in front of him, I'd say, have you ready?
Right in front of him, please.
He's like, he's like, there, you're right in front of you, alright, that works. Any other questions on that one before we move on? Alright, so, Summery Summer Kickoff, um, a lot of people had very good feedback regarding the New Year's Eve and how it was such a good community event, up with the ice skating rink, the number of people that attracted up there, and down to the New Year's Eve with the entertainment, fireworks, the vendors, and things like that. So talking with those individuals, we'd like to do like a Summery Summer Kickoff party in early June. Um, so the biggest issue is, is the funding right now. So in the budget that we approve, there is five thousand dollars for marketing in my department, and we have also allocated twenty-five thousand dollars for economic development. Fifteen thousand dollars of that was supposed to be going towards phase two of the stamp program for fifteen thousand, so I don't wanna touch that, but the other ten thousand dollars, I wanna use those funds to go towards this summer kickoff party. The reason why I wanna use them, because right now we have no initial funding to get the stuff going, obviously to book bands, entertainment, all those things cost money, and we do not have those funds right now. In the past, we haven't used those, and this is gonna be like a completely community-oriented event, like bringing our businesses to be vendors for practically nothing, to help make it like, to get different kid-oriented, um, activities down there through the YMCA or through the Dagan scene, things like that, that's the whole point of the community, to try to bring more people in to introduce our businesses downtown. So with that being said, I wanna use those fifteen thousand dollars to hope, kickstart this event, to get it going. So I wanna make a motion to use the fifteen thousand dollars from, five thousand from the marketing fund, and ten thousand dollars from economic development. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I think we should discuss it in the future exactly how the money's gonna spend.
Well, it will be, everything will be like a New Year's Eve, everything will come about saying, this is where all the funds are going, it's not gonna be just a blind check written out, like, it'd be, everything will be tracked, saying, like, for example, how it is for New Year's, everything's gonna be tracked by the Treasury Department, for national out, is everything mined, itemized, so everyone knows where the funds are at, and things like that. Any other questions, anyone? Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to use those funds to help start the Summery Summer Kickoff. Do I have a second?
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Uh, Black Balloon Day and endorsement of Remembrance Day, uh, Chief Eric, could you just speak a little bit about it and what will be taking place?
Yeah, I was coming back to Olivia Oden from the Director of United Way and Recovery, who sits my head by United Way. Uh, basically, all they want permission to do is tie black ribbons and wrap all the meters in town, they'll put them on, they'll take them off, as a Remembrance Day in March for, um, we begin, uh, more of a Remembrance Day. Obviously, we've had two, despite of the River Fest the last two weeks, so I think it's a good thing to do.
Any questions, anyone? Alright, I'll make the motion to have Black Balloon Day on March sixth as Remembrance Day. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes. Uh, the next two items, uh, I am going to table until next week, uh, the resignation and the new hires, so I'd like to, I make a motion to table them until the next meeting on February twenty-seventh. Do I have a second?
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Alright, uh, steam innovations, uh, innovations using the city logo, we're also going to table that until next meeting. We gotta do further research on using, uh, Vanessa Palavy logos for the sale, on the sale of products, and so on and so forth. So I make the motion to table that until next week, we get further information. Do I have a second?
Second.
Martina?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Barnhart, audit.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the firemen's relief.
I'll second with one comment, I was at the meeting when they accepted that, and everything came back with no dings, no miss, it was a perfect audit on their end, so kudos to everyone involved in that. Can I second?
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
I make a motion to accept the waivers and approvals for the Shiklemi Stadium project. Anybody has any questions?
Second.
I'm sorry. Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Uh, I make a motion, uh, return one twenty-one Line Street from commercial to residential. It was residential, but the commercial, now they want it back to residential, so I make a motion to move that to residential. Location, is that where the, uh, Shawstalls forecovering was at? And then, no, the lines, no, no.
Uh, Councilman Reichtner, our, um, the location of property is right, correctly across from the OPG?
Yeah, that.
Um, uh.
The thing you have is the lines.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't recall, I'd ever be on a forecovering place, I've always known it as an office space or, um, okay. But Mr. Wester missed here, the owner of the property, uh, he did contact me, and I told him that he had to follow orders one seventy-five eighty-nine, which is, that's an approval from council, and meeting the character of the neighborhood, which he does, and he does also meet the regulations for chapter one seventy-five nine, which is off-street parking and adequate, uh, licenses.
I'll second.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
We did have this at a, at a public, uh, public day. Right, right. I make a motion to accept the first reading of Bill twenty-two thirty-one newly proposed ordinance, public nuisance abatement.
Under, uh, C, we don't have non-profit corporations such as the Church of St. Louis, any authority on, on this? Which C? Second page. Just double C. Wow. Uh, the, uh, the private public. Yeah, we can definitely, they would fall within that spectrum anyway, it's not that, I'll put it.
Second.
Martina?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
This next one, it's, uh, the first reading of Bill twenty-two thirty-two newly proposed ordinance for the dumpsters.
Any questions, anyone? Question?
Dumpsters are roll-offs.
The roll-offs.
Roll-offs, and what we, in that is, when you get a roll-off, we wanted people to call up the code and just say you got it, your name, and, and what company you're getting it from, that way, if, if an emergency arises, it's, it's a safety thing, if a fire truck or something has hit, everyone knows, kind of.
So it's strictly the roll-offs.
Yeah, not the, not the dumpsters, not the.
Yeah.
Jeff, you wanna add anything to that, or?
Well, yeah, we, we wanna know when the dumpsters, when they're being placed, so that they're not being placed on our smaller streets, that we're gonna, we'll tell the, uh, we'll tell the dumpster companies that, that they're gonna, where to put it, where not to put it, it's on private property, they put it on private property, but if they wanna put it in the, in, uh, on the streets, we're gonna go where they can. We had one last year back on North River, and I couldn't get through the white truck, so, and the fire trucks can't. Uh, we also wanna make sure that they're not perpetual dumpsters, that they come in, they do their job, they fill it, they leave. They start throwing residential trash in, we're gonna make them double, it's not for residential trash, it's for commercial, or if it's residential crap trash, you're gonna have to get them with Lids on.
Covering, some kind of cover.
But it's a roll-off, it's the roll-off.
Oh, no.
But they, they're big thirteen yards, uh, not ten yards, those ones, they drop on the street and then they.
Okay, so when you see covering, they're gonna tarpe it.
They're gonna either tarpe it, or, or the companies are gonna have them with Lids that shut down. If they have trash, if it's, if it's, um, drywall, that's okay, we're not, we're not gonna punish them. Well, I mean, not, we're not gonna punish them, but we're not gonna go after them. Like I said, they're not gonna sit there for nine months, ten months at a time, and sit empty, or full. We're gonna go, we're gonna, we're gonna make, we're gonna.
There's a time, there's a timeframe.
We have a timeframe for permits, they're gonna, it's seven, it's a seven-day increments, seven-day increments they're gonna get, so they're gonna have to get in, get their work done, and go, they're not just gonna sit there for ever.
So we're gonna need a permit for this?
Yes, sir.
And it's only their own streets, not on private, like, right?
Correct, if it's like, if it's your own private property, different story, but if it's on the public street, yes.
You say it'll be going like a monthly, or a week?
No, if, if they come in, when they come in, or they call us, they're gonna ask us for the, for a dumpster permit. First seven days, we're not gonna charge them anything. If it becomes more than seven days, they're gonna come back to us, that way, I said, that way, we're not diverting school buses, you know, we have, we have dumpsters on Fourth Street this year, but we couldn't get school buses down, we had to get them moved. Uh, they're gonna come in after seven days, there'll be a twenty-five dollar fee, and, and so on, as they go. I said, hopefully, it encourages them to not let dumpsters sit for, we've had dumpsters sit in places for nine, ten, thirteen months, they just said.
But we're.
No, sir, we don't. We, when, when there's dumpsters sitting in town now. Well, hopefully, a contractor moves in and works quickly, they don't, they don't do, but what we're gonna do with, uh, I said, with the dumpsters, they're not gonna sit and sit and sit.
Well, for example, and you can walk through example, when, uh, Mr. Walber, uh, walked in prison, dumpsters sat down out there for, they extended for a time because of all renovations they had to do. And that was, they had contractors to hear. I think there's fewer discussions.
Well, contract, John, do you wanna vote, or do you wanna, do you wanna make what's.
I know, I know. I'm, I'm, I'll table that till we, till, uh.
No, that was just a stop session, I know you said roll-offs, but you can also comment on same dumpsters.
Jerome, that's what we call them, we call them, I call a dumpster, you call a roll, I call a dumpster, you call a roll, and that dumpster you were talking about, Jerome, that was full of, uh, residential trash, it sat there for months and months, and the neighbors use that as their personal trash can. The one you mentioned, you just mentioned.
That Walber's at the prison?
Alright, so we.
I'm gonna have to motion to table it, until, uh, till further discussion.
Alright, that's my second.
Uh, Eisler?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Martina, here.
In your packets, there, we got a letter from the Department of Transportation, um, the purpose of their letters to form a city, um, a proposed project in state route four oh five. They're also partnering with CEPAC, Metropolitan Planning Organization, they're working to implement what's called Pendoff Connects that helps coordinate with municipal officials to review transportation and new projects and everything like that. So we do have a letter on our packets, if you guys wanna read that over, if you have any questions, or how we feel about asking the questions or getting involved.
Keep going, Councilwoman Martina.
I, um, I'm just asking for approval for a road closure for July Eve, for the Fourth of July celebration on North Fourth Street.
Second.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina? Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
I don't really think about the council, it's all you. I'm not involved.
Oh, no, this is the engineering contract, you're doing the other one. I skipped down a little bit. I am asking for approval for the Red Street, Red Street Traffic Light Signal Engineering Contract, they are in your packet, it's, um, CES Engineering.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
I am also asking for approval for the Terry Traffic Light Maintenance Project.
Second.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister? Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
No, that's, so the garbage street, streetscape engineering contract, as we've discussed, we decided to fund that through our harbor funding. Total is eighty thousand dollars, uh, we are ready to award that contract.
Let me make that motion.
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Councilman Ister? Go ahead, sir.
I just like to make a motion to award the contract to Malbakers from the WP, while down on the roof.
Second.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Keep going, Councilman Ister.
We've already locked, which is his name, the Fashor, the, the, the store itself, make a motion to award that contract.
Second.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Also, uh, apparently, Brandon Ice White, full-time, with a budget, and then part-time is pretty tough.
Second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Council, uh, we're just gonna table. So I'll make the motion to second, I mean, excuse me, make the motion to table the city website until next week. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister? Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Reitner, doctors and invoices.
We have expenditures of eighteen thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and thirty cents for the general fund, and fourteen thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents for lifting the fuels. I make the motion to pay the bills.
Councilman Reitner, quick question, um, the trip, I missed. The controller pointed out, I just wanna make sure we're not gonna be double paying on these bills because he stated how they were already paid. So are we just making acknowledgement that these bills are just being paid, or what's going on there?
Either the bills that wouldn't have been approved on the twentieth, or on the.
Acknowledging that, I, I just wanna make sure, like, okay, because since they were paid without approval this week, I just wanna make sure that everyone's on the same page.
I don't know, I, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just asking, is there a question I get or not?
There was some doors that didn't do as, uh, great, but we, we were paying, and we paid these, and that way.
Nope, that's fine, just wanna make sure, like. Okay, just wait, okay, Councilman, I will, second.
Uh, Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
There are some discussion items, uh, first one, event coordinator, I believe Johnny helped me out a few weeks, I don't know how many weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. Uh, there was some discussion about having event coordinator or coordinators. Uh, there was, after this, when agenda was posted, there was some concern, I wanna say concern, issues from the public saying how it wasn't advertised, or what's the job of these, these committees? I know Joel, um, we had a couple solutions, how we can get what the duties of the committee will be. And so like, for example, there were questions like, all right, will these people be whoever they, I don't know who they are, but would these people be the ones like handling the approval, or they be the ones doing the setup, the teardown, handling the finances? So does that relate any details of?
What it was, was just coordinating the events so one doesn't overlap the other.
No, I get that part, but it's like, are they gonna be the ones doing the setup for the event? Are they gonna be the ones doing the teardown for the event? Are they gonna be the ones handling the funds for the event or after the approval? So like, what's their, like, I'm not disagreeing with what the causes, but like, there's no guidance on what they're supposedly doing.
Well, ju- just that coordinating the dates for the events, the event, people that are hosting the event are the ones that are gonna tear up, sit down, tear it down and set it up.
So I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but like, for example, we have a list and say you all saying when all the events are, I mean, so.
Well, there was confusion in there, and this, this way puts a lot of, people come in with their events and they put, this is when it went, the event, the event coordinators, they sit down and they figure out all the dates, and then they, what they suggest to Jim, who's, him in for his final approval, unless they need a vote, whether they.
So if someone's going to do an event, send them to them now, they no longer come to the city. Now, I just want, because like, there's, that's why I'm saying, so there's no confusion on where people go, and who they contact, do they come here, do they go to them? That's what we need to.
They come here for their applications, and then they, uh, get the applications, fill them up, bring them here. Then the event coordinators take the applications and they meet, uh, they should meet once, once a week, or ev- or every other week and, and get down, and then they contact us, say, okay, these dates are up. Then they go to Jim for final approval, because if you have, and you have overlapping events, it doesn't do anybody any.
Oh, no, I agree, so they be contacting the city, so we're on the same page, so that way, now.
Yeah, Jim would have final approval, because he's.
That's all riding on you.
First of all, normally, their job is to make sure it's not the double book.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll never deny, I'm like, that I'm aware of, deny anybody, which might move them over to another date.
Yeah, yeah.
And back to the cleanup and setup and so forth, we have nothing in that.
Right.
Why, no, we don't, say, I didn't, because people are asking, well, they gonna, the event coordinator, they gonna be doing, and meaning of a coordinator, like, when we had the New Year's Eve stuff, like, we tore, uh, we set up, we tore down, that type of stuff, that's what people were asking, like, who's gonna be responsible, so.
This is just coordinating the dates, and to make sure that, that, and they're, they're both here, they're gonna comment later on, and they're.
What was, what was?
Change the name to event scheduling. Now, I make a suggestion, I mean, for.
But Andre just asked for an event, that didn't go to the coordinators, though, I need to know what's the process.
Well, that's what we're saying, so go ahead.
But, not to interrupt, but I, Jim, um, maybe you could correct me this. I believe, and I'm not trying to probably move on, but it used to be Terry would have the calendar and then the assistant, maybe that is something in the job structure of your assistant?
We do have.
That's what I was saying, right?
They got to be, keep, so many people were starting to do events, and then the right hand wasn't telling the left.
Okay, but they all still had to go to Terry or the, I mean, just try to help out, okay? You're creating a law in your position, you're creating a law in your position to do something that you have to.
That was my question.
Well, that would, wouldn't that alleviate them a little bit to do other, other jobs and, and that they're getting paid?
Is this gonna be employed in the city?
No.
Contact person who are volunteers?
Volunteers, let's not pay.
Well, the volunteers is if something does happen, they're gonna call back. Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to, I think you may be part of, make it easier to do.
Do you explain what I'm saying, sir?
Yeah, we would like to say something, so, for one, a lot of people are, have a opinions who don't actually know how it works, or who don't actually do events. So that's kind of, you know, um, the reason we volunteer for this, remember, volunteer is, you know, we don't, we don't have to do it. I mean, it's just something we thought we would do to help out, since we have a lot of experience doing it. Um, and I get how the process works, I've been doing events for many years, and so has Slade.
Did you guys have any issues with that process in the past?
Yes, yes.
What were the, what were the issues?
Yeah, there's.
Double booking.
Double booking has been an issue, um, a lot of times before, uh, an event, you're supposed to put on what you need for an event, that wouldn't be there, I would end up calling the day before, saying, hey, we don't have this, we were supposed to have trash cans, we were supposed to have this, we don't have this, it's a Friday, the event's the next day. This has happened more than once. Um, then the person who's supposed to bring that stuff, they're annoyed because they have to run around doing that on a Friday, and then they're blaming somebody else because, oh, well, they didn't let us know that this was going on, and this has happened several times, and, um, Jolynn has even before said, well, I emailed them, they knew that they were supposed to do this, and then they said, well, we never got an email, and.
So you're gonna be, so you guys are gonna be the ones making sure that process takes place then, is what you're saying? Uh, just so we're all on the same page, 'cause like, making sure the people who need to set up know they need to set up.
Right, and they contact the fire police. And, and if there's a road closer, make sure Steve knows about the road.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, like, there's no set things in the guidelines, so.
So, so basically, the form that you fill out would be, once Jimmy signs off on it, would be distributed to all those departments. So everybody can say, not the email anymore, you get handed the paper. Steve would get handed the paper, here's the event.
So now my next, oh, I'm sorry.
That's when Steve loses it, when we hand it to him.
You know, so then everybody is on the same page, and you don't have two functions all on the same day. Trying to raise money for two different causes, and it, it's just tough to do. And then also, uh, you know, garbage bags, garbage bags, they're expensive. I think all these events, mine included, should pay for a garbage bag. We go through a lot of garbage bags. And, and, you know, there ought to be a fee, I'm not saying the city should make money on it, but if a case of garbage bags is forty dollars, then you have to pay forty dollars for a case of garbage bag, out of your profits. You know, that just has to happen. The city taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for garbage bags and hand silk and paper towels, and, and the list goes on and on and on. You have spiders, you have snakes, they wear out, they need replaced. You know, all by.
All we wanna do is help alleviate confusion, to make it easier, and to make it less stressful for everybody. We just want to help out, to organize it, to make sure everybody's on the same page, and then.
Everything would go to Jimmy, once we're done, it would go to Jimmy.
All right, so if they get the application at the city, then they return it to you?
No, they return it to the city, we'll get it off Jolynn.
Okay, then, as Rick said, not, I'm not saying this to happen, but what holds you guys responsible to do it? Like, wait, like, for example, let's just say, you guys both go on vacation for a week, I, we're not doing that, we're not doing it.
Well, that.
I'm, I'm just, that's for example, because if something falls through, it's gonna come back on us, not, not you guys, so that's.
Well, it already comes back on you now, I mean.
So that's what I'm saying, so we're not recording, I'm not against what you're doing, but I'm saying, is, what holds you guys accountable to us? Cause you, as you said, you're volunteer, you can walk away at any time, and we're right with the issue.
Yeah, a lot of.
That's, that's not in our character, just not to walk away, you know? And we would, Jimmy would know step by step what's happening, I mean, that's what we would answer to, it's his department.
I just want to, because look, did you see, Andre just got approved for his event? It did follow the process that you guys were saying.
Right.
So I need something to say to the people.
And that's what.
The process isn't here yet, we're, that's what we're in the process, it was just made.
Well, then his event should have been approved.
All right, so how about, can you guys, for next meeting, bring a process, so we could say, so they, we get, we pick up the application, blah, blah, blah?
We'll give you step by step.
There you go.
Not step by step, but you see.
They didn't approve by then.
We'll have a step by step, like, what we're gonna do, and start the pitch. The time they fill it out, for the back payment to the city, the Jimmy getting it signed and all, and then the paper getting it.
All right, sounds wonderful, let's see how we have all our. Yeah.
Which I, I'm not saying nothing bad about anybody, it's just we can't have one coming through. I have people calling me constantly, I'm telling them it's on hold, until I know what the process is now.
Well, I mean, even our events are on hold, we didn't.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so, we can't.
Yeah, I mean, we did have that event coordinator meeting, and, I mean, Josh, you were aware, you kind of came to it then, but it was.
I was, but what I'm saying, was it an invite only, was it open to the public, was it announced publicly when the meeting was, was emails sent out? Like, those are questions that I am, like, for example, people ask me, hey, when's the meeting? And I gotta tell them when it was, they had no idea when the meeting was.
Hey, if somebody else wants to do it, we don't have to.
Like, I'm, like I said, because I knew, Councilman Barnhart and Ister, I knew I didn't have to show up, but the same, these are.
I must discuss, because they didn't do their job.
Think, question that people are asking, Jack.
Yeah, well, I mean, we discussed all of this at the meeting, I'm just saying, he would have had all the information, would have known what to tell him.
Yeah.
That's all it's by.
But it also goes back to, are you everybody on the same page, like, meetings take place that, for example, not that I, I didn't care, but I knew from John and stuff, but you know, meetings take place that, not everybody can follow what goes on, as you said, for example, so.
I mean, it's not, it's not that complicated, we're not trying to like, butt in or anything, we're just trying to help make it easy.
So, yeah, we'll get that process, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
So I guess my.
All right, the next one, once again, I know last year at this time, people, we received the money for the RC track, just asking, when is it gonna get built, or stuff like that, because they just have some questions, I figured I'd bring it up, see where we're at with it. All right, so do we need to hire somebody, or hot wife or? All right, 'cause people were asking, I'm like, I don't know.
To process things and the things that they have, all, and you're not gonna start a project.
Yeah, I'll, I'll understand, all right, that works. Uh, next one, parking meter update, uh, Chief, we speak about.
Uh, the meters are in, uh, just so the public is aware, as people are passing off, it is orders only. People are calling, saying, I've got orders in the middle, but not meters, sometimes, sometimes, they'll make those. Orders only, um, the signs are in, uh, teaching today, and have a few words with them, and then the next one called, we're just, the week, it should be here by now. Uh, so they are getting one that, um, so the signs should be up for the pay, the tax to pay, parking, and stuff like that. Permits are online, you could purchase your permits online now, if you want. Uh, we did have them make a change to the website, because it said pay fine, I just wanted to make a change to the city's website. Uh, it said permits and pet, you know, fines and stuff like that, so it's still coming along, we'll just keep everybody up in.
So permits tend to be purchased online?
Permits, per, regular permits, three permits, parking permits for lots, they're all gonna be purchased online.
Okay, and.
If you chose, still choose to go into the parking lot, if you want to, you can purchase them all.
Okay, and there, is there any more update on the tax to pay portion of it?
That, that's all we're sort of talking, just talking about.
Okay.
We have the signs, we can, we can look again.
Okay, so, any questions, anyone?
Yeah. A question on which parking meter?
Yes.
The one, and Arch and Third, I think I seen the meters for one of those.
Yes, they're gone.
Is that gonna be, is that gonna be a permit parking lot?
Well, you can pay, the way it works is you can, the permits, you, you do buy a permit, no matter what it is, daily permit, weekly permit, monthly permit, you can park it in the lots, anywhere on the street, there is, if you, if you decide the tax to pay, you'll need a few hours, you can buy a couple hours on that tax to pay, instead of just buying a permit, you can have two hours to park in those lots.
I guess a question, what designation or what is there? If you're pulling into a spot that doesn't have a meter on it, it would be nothing?
Oh, we talk, no, so we talk about your license plate. So basically, when you quit, it's, once we get the app up and running, I'll have a demonstration show everybody. So basically, what happens is you get your, you wanna pay for two hours, that's fifty cents, that's fifty cents, that's two bucks. So essentially, what you do is you, you'll text the number, it'll bring you to a site, you go in there, you enter your vehicle information, enter your credit card number, and then there's like a fifty cent convenience fee for the tax to pay for parking for like metered spots, not metered or used spots. Permits are, there's a difference, a convenience fee in that. So once you're, once you put your vehicle in there, your vehicle's in there.
Everything is safe.
It's safe, you don't ever have to go back and go, oh, I forgot my license plate, did I? So if you're sitting here in a parking spot, Todd's going by and he sees it, there's no meter there, even if there is a meter there and it's flashing zero, all this do is type in the license plate number and just, oh, they pay.
So even though there's no meters when I park in the car, we're, I'm probably, we're getting these.
Yeah, yeah.
For you to park there, you have to register online.
Or buy a permit.
Buy a permit, okay.
You can buy a permit or you can pay by hour.
So you can buy permit, buy for money.
For the week, the day, we add first.
But that's only good for parking lots.
No, that is good for anywhere, it said you can buy a permit.
Now, unless it's changed, the only permits that can be used anywhere in the city were the annuals.
Well, we, we, I brought this up months ago, I discussed that. We did, we discussed it, I brought it up several times. Well, Kevin says, and I'll tell you why, I'm sorry for your, you know. Kevin's, Kevin's point is, if a business wants to pay, you know, buy a permit or stuff, oh, now I'm gonna park in front of my business. And I explained to some other business people, well, if you're a business owner and you're allowing your employees to park right in front of your business, the shame with you as a business owner, you should tell them, park somewhere else or park in the lots, use the lots for that, alright?
Then, then I guess the question I have, why are we even selling the annual permits? You can buy a monthly permit for twenty dollars, which would be two forty a year.
Because Kevin said they were too expensive the way I have them.
Compared to four hundred.
Because, again, they were too expensive, I said, fine, what do you want, what do you wanna make? This is just starting initially. This, I was talking about how you're gonna pay more if you did it on a monthly basis compared to a yearly basis.
Just there to hatch where, hatch where. I got the idea, Kevin said that.
It should make, it makes more sense if you're buying on a monthly basis, that's more expensive. He also.
The only ones that would be used throughout the whole city were the annuals.
No.
That can be used at the meters or the, or the lots, like, the ones, like, the state gets down here. They, the monthly ones and stuff are only good for parking. Now, I'll find out tomorrow, I wish I knew that, but there's no sense of charging four hundred dollars for an annual permit when you can buy it monthly for two hundred and forty, is what I'm getting.
I agree, one hundred percent, I agree with you.
I think that was the discussion, we had that discussion.
Well, it's something that we're not gonna solve here, but we can get it next year, for the fees we're out, we can change that.
The lot's problem is the fee schedule comes out so late, and I said it before, and this needs to start to be discussed in like August.
Yeah, we can start discussing that, yes.
And I have a fee schedule. Cause we can also ask you.
Yes, correct, yes.
Because last year, when I set the original fee schedule, I added that, it's a monthly, it's a yearly, it's beneficial to buy the yearly permit, it's gonna need, it's gonna happen. And then we also said, I said, we're not gonna be, we're gonna be, both the permits will be good for this lot, this lot. You buy a permit, pay whatever, throughout the whole city, just makes more sense, it's a lot easier and smoother.
Well, I, I, I don't know that, that, but I'll find out tomorrow, I'll talk to Kevin more about.
Well, change.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, but if he's not, if he's not interpreting that way or doing it that way, then you're gonna be confused again.
Yeah. Well, Rick, we can figure it out tomorrow and that's something we can revisit.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a month out with the text to pay, we'll get that figured out, once that's out and, you know, it's, it'll be out the door and we'll go from there.
Steve?
Real quick, I got a skit of all these meter heads down there at my shop, I want them gone, so.
You can sell them in this event.
I, I'm, I wanna, just a discussion period here this week, so next week you guys can vote on it, then we can sell the damn thing and get them at my shop. There is no value for us to have them because they're no working part.
And I don't know if we'll get anything on, I mean, this is a bid, you're counting on some other old municipality that has enough grid or meters that they think it's fair. Well, for their team, if they know, they know, they know.
Alright, sounds good. Joe, you have a thought?
Is, is there gonna be signage for out of town people or general public to know how to, to do this at the parking lots? When you pull in, is there gonna be signage?
Yeah, that's what we're waiting for, Joe, we're waiting for the signs to make it says, it's gonna, you know, text to pay here and then it explains it. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty user friendly, it is.
Obviously, for, for people that come from out of town, you know, like, just those things, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So is this into effect now, the meter parking or the permit parking?
Yes.
Because I'm with Cardella's, okay? So I don't come in all the time, I don't work there, there's a lot of people that do work there. I'm handicapped, so I use the handicap in the back. Um, if I have to go on the street for any reason, I do, but it's only a couple hours and I would plug the meter. I mean, is the permit parking, I, I myself usually come on the weekends and at night, does permit parking all the time, twenty-four seven?
No, par- parking, parking enforcement is from nine to four thirty every day, okay? So if you, if you, you're coming in two days a week, your best bet's just to go down to City Hall and buy two, two daily permits.
And how much is a daily permit?
Four dollars.
Oh, how much is a monthly?
Twenty.
Twenty, I think.
Oh, damn.
I think you can do it online or you can go down to the drag department.
Yeah, they have a breakdown of the numbers of daily, weekly, monthly, whatever you would need, or, you know, you wanna pay by the hour or meter, whatever.
Is there any way any of the businesses could make some sort of a deal for a certain amount of parking spots for like a cheaper permit price? Like, like say, Cardella's for instance, six spots, certain amount of price parking, like, is there any way? Businesses, not just us, I'm talking about businesses, I mean, that all could do that.
I don't, I don't know what businesses now buy spots, there's, I know State Farm does, I don't know what they're doing.
Well, we will have to, so that's the only thing I'm asking.
I guess that's my issue with these.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, oh.
I guess that's where my issue lies, and why, actually, why I'm here, I was gonna wait till the end, is I have sixty vendors. So do I go buy a pass every month for sixty vendors and they can change every three months, you know, for sixty vendors? When one to the, one day you might have one person, another day you might have twelve, you never know what you're gonna get. Sixty vendors, like twenty dollars a month, every month, is too much. Yeah, I get your attitude, yeah. It's, so it's, I'm kind of running to an unusual situation, but I can wait till the end to discuss it, I'm too.
This is for parking out front?
Out back, there is no parking out front right now. There is no, Tuesday to Wednesday, there's almost no parking out front.
Okay, cause I was like, well, then how do you stop people from pulling in out front, but out back?
Right, yeah, out back, yeah, out front we're having issue because we are having business owners parking out front. Um, we're having their employees parking out front, we're having delivered people parking out front. We have other people parking there, we don't even know where they're at, cause they're definitely not your place or my place or, but there's no parking. So we need extra cost to be parking with them.
That's, that's the problem, you run into a public parking, you know, it's kind of hard to regulate public parking in a public area.
Right, so, but is it a public, because, oh, shouldn't there be streets then, or like, in the interim, there will be, when we have to pay thing going on, but in the meantime, what are we supposed to do?
So, in the meantime.
I mean, Brad's been working with me on it, but, yeah.
We, what you said about the, the, enough, like, you have one meter or twelve, we can discuss because a couple places, like, State Farm has purchased designated spaces for their people. So we have to, you know, get with you, discuss, alright, what are you looking for, so on and so forth. Obviously, we can't solve it here at the very moment, but it's a conversation that we can have to get some type of resolution to fix your guys' issue in the permit and things like that. But in the meantime, we can set something up, but in the meantime, you'll just have to follow what the chief said, whatever he recommended that you guys did right now, I don't know what that conversation was, but.
He needs good care of us, so I'm not too worried about that, but yeah, we wanna do.
Yeah, we can figure something out soon, go from there.
We definitely understand, I mean, I see a lot in the back alley, um.
Why is it that back alley is like interstate gate, you gotta move in there?
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
A lot on that.
No, but they, um, I mean, I see, as a business, you guys have two nice parking lots there, but I see what parks there. I see there's one that's, that puts all their people right in there, and they never want the meters up from the corner and then meters are off. And I see another one abusing it, and then I pulled in a Florida car the other day, I'm like, really?
Yeah, so we can talk about that, in the meantime, just do what the chief says and we can sit down, see what's something, see what we can come up, does that work?
Yep, I'll listen to him.
What's the website to buy a permit for the month?
What is it, Sunbury?
Sunbury.
Sunbury.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, thanks.
On Sunbury's website, there's a thing that says, I think now, I think it still says pay five, so click on that, it takes you to a portal. Uh, Sunbury City Portal, that has all the permits listed now. Yearly permits, you know, every permits have convenience fees, unfortunately, because a three dollar convenience fee is what it is. Uh, but the one nice feature about that text to pay, and I'll cut it off, is it tells you when, if you're buying maybe two hours, and let's say one of your vendors is like, oh, I'm a meter that are out really busy, it tells you when, hey.
This is running out.
Your parking's running out, you can add another fifty cents, and then it doesn't charge you the convenience fee.
And that's, I like that, you writing that it keeps all your information in there, cause some of our vendors are older, everyone has to help them with their phones and then they'll be okay.
Yep, but we'll get that conversation, go from there.
Okay.
But speaking of fees, now since we're talking about fees. But, you know, as Slade brought up about, you know, these different organizations using events, I mean, using facilities and not having to pay for anything, as you said, like, garbage bags, the spiders, the outlets, uh, the hand post stations, whatever it may be, we do have to come up with some type of fee to cover that cost of that item. As you said, not to make money, but to cover the cost of, if something breaks, that falls back on the taxpayer, shouldn't fall back onto the, it should fall back onto the person who was using it, like, for example, whether it's the riverfront, the ball fields, the ice rink, there's always a fee, so. If you got, I'm gonna send out a list of just some example fees that you guys wanna repeat it, so we can get that going, so, you know. No, that's, no, it's fine, we're discussing this. Alright, so maybe we can get Carl to send to, we'll get the list from Carl, it adds, take away, or whatever it may be and go from there, that way, it isn't falling back on the taxpayer, falls back on the person who was hosting the event. Any questions on anybody? Alright, so, uh, there's a new, uh, fire, uh, fireworks ordinance that the state just passed. Uh, so two, there's two different options in there, I'm not asking, it's, they're just in there for you to read. I know the chief briefly looked over them, I didn't know if he had any thoughts or opinions on them. Joel, if you have any thoughts or opinions as well, what you may think is best or not best?
Yeah, the bottom line is, one is absolutely no fireworks whatsoever, and the other is fireworks that are highly regulated. Those are the two options the state is giving at this point. The state is not allowing the free for all with fireworks anymore, they are highly regulating them as of this year. Um, as of twenty twenty-two, so we're gonna need permits, et cetera. I strongly suggest, at least, I mean, not at least, but I strongly suggest that in order to help out the people that are selling the fireworks, the people that like the fireworks, et cetera, we would go with second option being that which allows by permit, the use of fireworks within the city limits under regulated situations. But obviously, I ask that everybody looks through them, take a look at them, and then, you know, we'll make a decision some point in the future.
But they want a fireworks ordinance option?
Can you tweet that to the city, like, you can, well, there already is, isn't there?
Let time change, let.
So, I have something listening now, we're just gonna revive, your role.
Any questions, anyone on that one? Alright, Councilman Barnhart, you're up now.
Uh, photo ID, people were asking why when they rent properties, they have to have their photo ID, that's safety issue. I hope, hopefully, the, besides the code office, the fire, fire department and the police get eye work, so if they go into a house, it, and it's, renters in there, they can look to see, have pictures to see who's supposed to be in there, that way they know exactly who's in there. So that's why it's just a safety issue there, just so the, the code and the fire department and the police, all them, what's going on.
Uh, John, just one question on, not against it, just a suggestion, I don't know if we can do it, maybe Joel can go first. Um, if someone has a tenant in there for the last, let's say, ten years, and it's the same tenant.
Yeah.
Is there some way we can put in there, if it's the same tenant, or we, you know, if you're just asking them for a picture, we, you know, and, or they need to golf the same paperwork every year for their permits, like, is there some way, if it's the same tenant, like, you don't have to continually doing that every single year? I don't know if that's a.
Well, that's something we can, this is a parent's, if you have the idea of that person, their tenant was there for ten years, you feel it's great to work out.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because for the same people.
Or, or if you have, you know, dish in somebody who's already out with you or something.
Yeah, if there's somebody new, different story, but if it's the same individual, so. But maybe, you know, obviously people get older, you know, John still looks good yet for his age, but maybe we can put like, you know, every five years, you have to update it or whatever, maybe that way, you know. Because, you know, one day you had the mustache, and then you had the goatee and a big old beard, now you're back for the mustache, so. So maybe we can put some type of, you know, every five years instead of every year.
Yeah, we can get to that, we can certainly make operations on that.
Alright, any other questions on that one? Councilman Barnhart?
Rent to own. Yes, sir, please.
I have been asked numerous times over the past couple of years by the code department to define for them the difference between leases and rent to own properties. And whether or not the city had the right to enter into rent to own properties with the same designation as those which are rented or leased. Um, quite honestly, and I say this with all due candor, I gave them the wrong answer, because I was unaware of a recent case. Um, in the last couple of years, the Pennsylvania Superior Court had a finding, which was subsequently upheld by the Supreme Court. And if anybody wants to cite or the case, I can provide that to the clerk's office and they can give it to you. But in a, make a long story short, it says that a rent to own contract is a lease until it is fulfilled. Meaning a rent to own contract is a lease or a rental until the money is paid for the purchase. That is absolutely not what I thought the law was, it's not what the law was before this case, but it is the law now. And therefore, I have given that information to the code department and we will be proceeding accordingly.
So it's just that it's rent, rent, you're still renting, you're renting to own, but I mean, you still got a rental permit and you still get inspected.
Is it gonna be the same time, like, will there be a special permit for, I don't really, I'm just asking, I don't.
It's the same, it'll be the same.
Okay.
Any questions on anyone? Councilman Martina?
Steve? Um, yeah, we, uh, we're just hitting another new morgue, um. It'd be our last one of this in this cycle. Uh, originally had it budgeted, uh, and council wanted me to pull from ARCA funds instead, so we're at this point. Uh, they finally got some mowers in, uh, then we can actually like move forward, get a little bit more.
Jamie, you think we can tie them in?
Let's talk about ARCA. So, that, uh, Steve sent me over the invoice, it has a CoStar's number, all for eight, ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, and that one, so that's. The question is, where do you wanna take it? Because today you have allocated, the last allocation you made, um, you moved the eighty thousand for the Market Street TA set site engineering from Susquehanna Avenue to that project, so there's only twenty thousand left sitting in the Susquehanna Avenue line item. The other thing you allocated recently was the funding for the city hall improvements. So the question is, do you wanna reduce the city hall improvements? Do you wanna reduce the Susquehanna Avenue line further?
Could, so, question.
Where do you wanna move the project?
Steve, I know you said you're gonna put stuff on Manisipit, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so can we take from, for example, I'll say Susquehanna of ten and then reimburse it later on, can we do that?
Well, you wouldn't be reimbursing your ARCA, it would just be back in your general bond. So these are basically funds under the revenue laws category, which means you replace revenue, that was very extreme COVID. So you can use it for these kinds of things because they're general government expenses.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It's just, you know, where do you move it?
Whether you, whether you wanna do it or not, so how many mowers do you have now?
We got a lot of mowers, I got a lot of mowers to sell, so we will make up this ten thousand dollars, I will send, sell ten thousand dollars worth of mowers. This will be paid for that way, it's a matter of however you guys wanna work the numbers, it doesn't matter to me.
So can we just, I mean, this is a Joel question, or is this thing? Take it out of one line item, approve it, and take out of whatever, we'll say small income, I don't know, and then just reimburse it back into that?
That's what I wanna do a lot, and not get into this ARCA.
Well, so, can we do that? Span, can we do that, and why don't we do a council vote to say, acknowledge that it's doing it, and it goes, once he resells that, even that amount goes back into that?
I think, I thought that's what he was asking.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, then, well, obviously, then with the assumption when he gets.
Yeah, council, council, it's all this was made between people. Yeah, Steve, what do you have for equipment, right, how much are your budget? What do I have for equipment, I have nothing in there to replace equipment. I had eleven thousand dollars in that budget line item when we were working the budget, and that got pulled out.
See, that's, and it's not just them, but it was also vehicles too. If you remember, we removed all that stuff out there and centered on paperwork and ARCA dollars. Under, we did the budget.
The only reason I ask that, if he had a budget, he could take what he would reap versus. Well, this, this is what I'm, what I'm saying is, though, is, is this can all be avoided, as long as you guys just make a decision to say, anything I sell, my mowers that I sell, goes to the positive end of my line item in my budget, and then I can reap out of that budget to pay for the new mower. That's just the simplest thing.
Well, no, there's a dollar value, what, what's the price of one mower?
Ten thousand centimeters.
That's what you're gonna recover, you're not gonna get reaped all the mowers you already did your last time.
So, okay, so.
So what he's saying is, is that if you want the ten thousand dollars, then you need to make sure that the, the music bids is gonna cover the ten thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm sure you can cover that now.
So.
Yeah. Alright, so for, so on the short end. Do a resolution?
Let's move dollars around, so it's not making a big difference.
Alright, then we'll, we'll get it for next meeting, Steve, and then, we go ahead.
Just, I have a question here, lady. Because we had this, we had this conversation before, this, years ago, I had, uh, uh, two security that was told, and the money, instead of it going back into the car, now seven thousand dollar check for, from the insurance company, and they just said, well, that just goes back in the general problem. Yeah, but that's, that should have been allocated to go towards the car. Now, I have, for instance, insurance checks come for damages, they think.
take two thousand dollars out of my maintenance budget for my vehicles, and then I get a two thousand dollar check from the insurance company, but it doesn't show that on the budget. I'm questioning that, because I've always said, that, for some reason, doesn't seem right, you're taking it out and saying, well, now you're negative, but you lost monies back to help offset that cost. I don't know how that works, and I've always asked that question, and I've never really gotten a direct, straight answer.
So Joel, wouldn't it be back, but it should be back into the line item?
Okay. Well, if it's an insurance check, it should pay the damages.
I understand that, but it's coming out of my line item in my budget, but it's not, it's not being reimbursed.
So he's saying, like.
I don't know what's happening. I'm, I'm asking, so Jimmy, what? I know, I know, but, okay. I, I got that figured out, that should be happened. Insurance, you've been saying that for a couple of years now.
Yeah, but not just.
Not, no, I mean, for an accident. Yes, we've been saying that for a couple of years now.
So.
You go back into the earlier channel. We're, you missed my point.
Go ahead. I think Jimmy's agree with us.
Yeah.
I think he's agree with us, but it hasn't been done back yet.
Alright.
And it says it's twenty-five hundred dollars. That adjuster okays that, that check should be cut by him, and then when you get the car done, that twenty-five hundred dollars should be paid for.
But that's not, not.
But he said, for example, in the maintenance budget, for example, let's say someone hits the car, it's a two thousand dollar bill. So they paid the two thousand dollar bill out of the line item, but he's saying, when he gets the money back from the insurance, it doesn't go back in that line item, it goes back in the general fund. He needed to fix that.
But I get.
We should have the check before the work season.
But sometimes it doesn't happen. I need, I need to get the car fixed. I need to get something fixed, or anyway, I can't wait for that, sure, to figure out, like, this is a half. I got a check for four hundred dollars or something. I came out of my maintenance budget, now that should go back in to reverse that.
So I guess moving forward, when those incidents do occur, the supervisor, whoever that, you have to make sure that the monies are going into the correct funds, if not, will have to be readjusted.
Well, and this needs to be expanded as well. Again, if I say, sell tool X, that is obsolete. If I sell that, and I need to replace it, what ends up happening is, I sell tool X for, say, a thousand dollars.
Oh, you said it was obsolete, correct?
That, that thousand dollars goes to general fund and disappears, and then I have to purchase out of my budget for another tool.
Agreed.
Instead of having that feedback in here and saying, okay, manage your department and keep your flow, your, and your capital asset, moving forward in a positive manner that it's funding itself as it goes. And that ultimately bring your budget down, and that actually show you where your money's going, instead of having it just disappear in the general.
Oh, I.
That's all I'm saying, is get for accurate accounting.
I think this is a discussion that needs to happen.
Different time, but we'll get it.
It does need to happen.
Yeah, but Steve, we, we'll get the resolution.
Okay.
Let's start, he started this whole.
But it's not gonna come out of ARCA.
Correct.
That we're saying, ARCA is not gonna be a.
Correct. Councilman Easter, then trailer.
Yes, after all this, the vet thing, working on.
It summed it up perfectly.
These folks made my point, we need something to do, all this is looking around, we keep it on, so I'm looking.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And the trailer, I got around the right to have ten thousand dollars, and I figured it was gonna be, we couldn't lose that cost with advertising on the trailer.
Oh, I thought you were saying when Steve sells stuff on this.
But anyhow, uh, we bring some information back on, then trailer, put everything on there, so we hold it up on the, an event site, and my inventory list, which you use, and you break it, you pay for it, and we'll go.
Awesome. RACP application?
Yes. RACP application takes at least six, nine months, if it makes an motion, we start.
This is a discussion.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Discussion. Uh, get the, uh, RACP application started.
Sounds like one of the funny questions, anyone?
For what?
What's RACP for?
We're starting the application.
Alright, any, anything else on that? Alright, there are a few announcements, uh, accepting letters of interest to fill a vacant three-year term for the Board of Appeals in ARCA. Uh, any interested letters, uh, they can send to the city court, or email jaymartar@sunburypa.org. The no parking ordinance will be back into effect March fifteenth. Once again, the no parking ordinance will be back into effect March fifteenth. Uh, e-cycling, uh, event will take place April eighth, from ten to twelve, at the James R. Easter Community Center. Uh, commercial inspections will begin in mid-May. Sorry, mid-April? Sorry, mid-April, commercial inspections. The next council meeting will be held here at City Hall, next Monday, February twenty-seventh, at six fifteen PM. Is there, is there any public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Victoria, Michigan. So, this Sundary kickoff, where's that gonna happen?
As of right now, discussions have been down by the river, on the amphitheater, kinda what they did for two fifty with the bands and things like that, if everything falls into place.
Another question is, when a property becomes a bed and breakfast in the city, how, how is that parking done? How, where they have to have so many parking per, like stalls for bed and breakfasts?
Yep, it falls, it falls under the, uh, rental ordinance, which is, what's it, what it is?
Okay, so my question is, the bed and breakfast on the corner of Chestnut and Front Street. Any parking stalls, do they, do they say?
Zero.
Zero?
Zero. They fall under central business district, which requires zero parking for bed and breakfasts or.
Well, I have a concern about this bed and breakfast on the corner, because I live in that block. And our parking on Saturday night, they, one, our neighbor, they have been nothing but horrible to my neighbor, who minds her own business. She can't even park at her own parking spot, they'll hide inside her house, because they're constantly parking in there. And they just bring equipment in, they sit it there, she knocks on the door, she says to them, oh, well, you need to do a new property line, blah, 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 okay? The problem I had with Saturday night was that they had her parked in, so Kim couldn't even park in her spot. They had three people parked vehicles, and one of the parked, the van was parked on the sidewalk. So people couldn't even walk down the street, because they were parking on the sidewalk. I have a problem with that, because I witnessed the elderly people walking from the high-rise, exercising on the street, now those people have to step out into the street. It's a constant thing since they moved in there. Our neighborhood, our neighbors look out for each other, and it's a problem. So I don't know, let our neighbors know, remind them, this is not how we park in Sundary. I don't care about how you park in New Jersey or Florida, but it's a problem here. And we already have parking issues on that street, so it brings me to the next thing. So at one oh nine Chestnut Street, there was somebody there that had a handicap parking. They have not lived here for over a year, and the handicap parking sign is still up. And I emailed back on six twenty-two, and asked about the handicap parking signs coming down, because we're already limited now, because we have a bed and breakfast, and this weekend it was full. Our neighbor, we couldn't even park on our street, because the bed and breakfast had all parked.
Victoria, do you know if the parking spot is just a generic one, or is it like a size particular?
It's a sign.
Yeah, it's a reserved.
It's nice, because I haven't even lived there, no.
I'll look, I'll look on my spreadsheet tomorrow, and.
It was, yeah. It was one oh nine Chestnut Street is where the gentleman was.
Yeah, because we routinely retire them when people move out.
I, I, I emailed back in six twenty-two, I went back last night.
That may have just been something, something practical. If, if, if there's nobody there, it comes out.
Good, because we're already limited, you know?
That's not even a question.
And you can't tell, I'll be honest, neighbors are parking in.
If somebody's parking on the sidewalk, just call, we'll come out and put a deal over it. I mean, it'll, it'll stop.
Well, I hope, but, but the problem is, is you have, you know, like, this is a constant thing, you know, so, we'll do that.
But just call, we'll come out.
Yeah, well, I try not to do that, and so she should go there, she's nice. Um, so Ken, so I need to go back to the event thing here, because technically, I'm in the process of a Christmas in July, so is my event approved or not? Because I already started sending, I was under the impression I was okay.
You already came with a date, correct?
Correct, yeah. Which is always the same date, the last Saturday in July.
Yes, so.
Because I already have, my vendors are already saying, hey, 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 I can't sit around.
Yeah, so I forget the exact date.
Well, I'm held to a different standard, so I just wanna make sure that I'm doing it the right way. Um, so the other thing, back to the forms and filling out with the fire police, okay? Um, oftentimes, when we do the events, um, so the fire police is gonna get a copy of the, of the form of whatever street needs to be shut down or whatever?
From my understanding, correct, lady, whoever needs to get that.
Well, we, we haven't, we haven't got to that point.
No, but whoever needs to get the form, to get the form and information.
Yes, if we are the ones elected to do the position, yes.
Because in, in the past, the, the concern is that I've had to close my shop myself, because they're not there on top of the road. Um, you know, you know, so there, there needs to be a better communication with them, because you can't email them, you know, you, you call them and text them, they don't respond. So that's not a continuum of what we need to do. So that, and that means other people are having the same issue, and I know they are, because they've had the conversation. Um, and so honestly, it's getting to the point where I'm about ready enough to use Sundary Fire Police and just pay, because I'm tired of dealing with the headaches, honestly, and the disrespect that I have to deal with.
And I'm not being disrespectful when I say this personally that way. If you choose to go that route, that is your option.
I should have to go that.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, if that's, like, since you made.
But again, they can, they can stomp and be disrespectful, and almost hit me with a car, and all those things, and I'm tired of it. That, that is not acceptable, and the way that they speak. I had, I actually asked them to remove them for my Christmas in July last year, because their son almost hit me with a car when I was putting a, a, a cone down. And I asked him to leave my event because of his mouth. It is not okay. So somebody, whether it's the fire department or somebody, needs to talk about the appropriate way you handle the public and crossing streets. And even Riverfest, they did not have the street closed properly. I had to go and ask them to put cones up, because we almost had an accident on Front Street. So there, there needs to be a little more communication and training or something, because people are gonna get hurt. Um. And also, just back to, so, so one of the conversations I heard tonight, too, was for, like, committees and volunteers, and accountability. So I really think, I'm encouraging council to really look at all your committees, and I think what you need to do is, those people that are volunteering, you need to figure out who's responsible, and who that person should be reporting to. Okay? Because there's things that are happening with city committees that you don't even know that are happening. I've gone to two council people about something that has been out there and advertised, with the city logo on it. It has not happened, it's being advertised, a business has been attached to it, and you guys have no clue that that's out there. So I think what you really need to do is look at your committees that are, have volunteers on them, and you guys need to appoint a council person or somebody to oversee those, because like you said, what if I just said, I'm done? Then what? Or I'm not gonna do this. So, yeah, I am a volunteer, and I won't do that. But my concern is, is that when the city is being misrepresented by a committee, it's a legal thing, and I have brought it to two council people, and I hope you're looking into it, because I have a problem with it. And the problem was, something was advertised that was gonna happen in November. Then it was advertised that it was gonna happen in December. Then it was advertised it was gonna happen in January, and it has a business posted to it as a sponsor. So my question as a citizen, is that business paid for that sponsorship? And if they did, where did the money go? So I encourage you to look into it, Mr. Barnhart, Mr. Easter, you know, I've been talking about, and I would like, and I hope that I get answers on that, because, and I do believe Joel needs to be included, because it's a real legal issue.
Well, Joel wasn't.
Good. Because it's not okay.
We can say it was.
Well.
Go ahead, sir, please state your name.
Bill Zerby. I had a question for the handicapped, picky question about. First off, they're not for the people, you can, I had a handicap space, put down a mower if you ever lived there. Anybody else in this room that has a handicap plate to park that, that's not mine. So for somebody to call and take that space away, doesn't matter whose it was, it was put there for a handicap. Second, you have all the events down here, Riverfest. Don't you think it'd be nice to let a handicapped person use that space if you want to, no Riverfest? They are not your handicap. They are put there for a handicapped person, no matter who it is.
Well.
That's not a legal question.
Yeah, we do, when we put, there is a process to get handicap parking in blocks, residential areas or other areas. So when somebody calls and says, hey, I need a handicap, we send them down to Delin, Delin gives them an application, Steve goes down and, and checks things out and looks at it. You can actually purchase, now, you can purchase your own spot for a purpose, a fee in here you can pay. But for the most part, yes, anybody can park in that spot, no matter if you call and say, I want a handicap, if you don't pay for it yourself, it's a general handicap sign to put up.
Correct.
For your residents, anybody can park there. Usually what happens is, is once that person then no longer needs that, they take it back down for regular parking, because it's no longer needed for that actual resident that requested. And they only allow so many a block, because otherwise, you have everybody under the sun giving all those handicap parking themselves.
Yeah, but, but my question is, what does that spot hurt there on Chestnut Street? I understand it's parking for her, but if.
I don't think, I don't think she was just for her.
No, not for me. And I, believe me, I advocate for handicapped people, I don't have an issue with that, but the thing was, it was put in.
It's not happening to make back and forth, so.
I was just explaining.
You wanna take a space away that somebody could essentially use.
I don't care if it stays, I'm just concerned about a bed and breakfast that's being.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir?
Joe Bartelo. Uh, the new ordinances that you're proposing, are they available for the public to view online, or in the city clerk's office, or anything like that?
They'll be in the city clerk's office.
Okay.
I don't put them online, Joe, but I'm, I'm assuming they may be online as well.
Okay.
I, I just don't know how.
Okay, and, uh, the, the kickoff date, did you have a date for that summer kickoff?
We do not have a date yet, we wanna make sure there is nothing else scheduled down there on that day.
So I, I think the SRI sandwich stroll is June third, is tentative date for that.
Not that I know of.
So, I'm just, I think that's, I think that's what I heard, so.
I didn't hear any date on that.
Well, what a better way to get more people to the sandwich stroll, by having a kickoff party.
Exactly, well, I just wanted to let you know.
More sandwiches for everybody.